Okay, are we all set, team? It looks like it. Nice to see so many happy people here in the chambers this evening. Certainly is a special meeting and I'm so happy to have everybody here with us as we go through this formal change, which happens every couple of years. So I will be calling this meeting to order for the Kalamazoo City Commission. It is a business meeting, not a committee of the whole meeting, for Monday, November 17th, 2025. First order of business, roll call. Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you so much Clerk Borley. I am going to just jump in here now and just with a point of privilege, I am going to add a former city manager, Ken Collard, who's here in the chambers with us, as the first item under remarks and recognitions. Thank you for being here, city manager, Ken Collard. Next item of business is approval of the minutes. So I'm looking for approval of the minutes from the city commission meetings on October 6th, October 15th, October 20th, and October 30th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Kiana Decker.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Thank you so much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion passes. We are now down to C, remarks and recognitions, and city manager, I believe who served almost 10 years, Ken Collard, would like to make a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate this opportunity to address the commission at this point before Don, Commissioner Cooney, and Commissioner Decker escape. I want to thank both of them very much for their service. I didn't have the privilege of serving with Commissioner Decker, but I certainly understand what kind of service you did provide for our community, and I appreciate that. Commissioners and city staff, good afternoon. I'm Ken Collard and I reside at 2921 Larry Lane.
Can you give that microphone a little... There you go, great.
Good afternoon, I'm Ken Collard and I reside at 2921 Larry Lane in Kalamazoo. I come before you today to honor two of our dearest friends. Bob Beam, the retired vice president of Western Michigan University and an ardent lifelong supporter of Kalamazoo, who passed away last week. And Don Cooney, who is re-retiring as a city commissioner today. Also Commissioner Decker, thank you for your service again. I wish to honor both Don's service to me as a friend, teacher, mentor, and boss over the last two decades, and the service to mankind over the last eight decades. His is truly an iconic life story of commitment, truthfulness, and compassion. A principled and pragmatic radical, may be considered an oxymoron by most, but Don made it work. I felt a gift was in order to underscore my appreciation for Don's friendship, but after 88 years, what could he possibly need? A familiar quotation seemed to be my best bet. But from whom and on what topic? I considered two of Don's favorites, Eugene Debs and John Lennon. Seriously, but neither of them fit. But another auspicious occasion with a focus on service, humanity, peace, and faith had occurred in Oslo, Norway, on December 10th, 1964. So I bowed as a gift for Don, a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. Here's to you, Don. "I have the audacity to believe that peoples everywhere can have three meals for their bodies, education and culture for their minds, and dignity, equality, and freedom for their spirits. I believe that what self-centered men have torn down, men others-centered can build up. I still believe that one day mankind will bow before the altars of God and be crowned triumphant over war and bloodshed. And nonviolent, redemptive goodwill will proclaim the rule of the land. And the lion and the lamb shall lie down together, and every man shall sit upon his own vine and fig tree, and none shall be afraid. I still believe we shall overcome." End quote from Martin Luther King. Thank you again, my friend, and may your spirit never leave this chamber. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Collard. We are now on to remarks by city commissioners. Do you want to start this in a formal way? I know we also have some formal recognitions as well. How would we like to start this, this evening? Anyone like to get started? Okay, well, I'll tell you what, then, we'll break the ice a little bit here, and we'll go to our, what we have with some proclamations, and I think that Vice Mayor Hess, do you have a proclamation to read?
I have a proclamation honoring city manager.
Well, let's go back next, then. Okay, so let's do... Commissioner Pradel, we'll start off with that, then.
It's not gonna prevent me from making some comments about him at some point, right? Okay, good. So this is a proclamation honoring Don Cooney for dedication and service to the city of Kalamazoo. Whereas Don Cooney has served as a city commissioner of the city of Kalamazoo for 11 terms from 1997 to 2019, and 2021 to 2025, including four years of service as vice mayor from 2015 to 2017, and 2021 to 2023. And whereas Commissioner Cooney has served on numerous city commission standing committees, including the Administrative Committee, Legislative Committee, Internal Audit Committee, Housing and Neighborhood Development Policy Subcommittee, Public Health Education and Safety Subcommittee... I mean, this is 26 years, folks, so bear with me. Poverty Reduction Subcommittee, Racial Equity Subcommittee, 2019 Visioning Subcommittee, Anti-Discrimination Ordinance Subcommittee, Service Delivery Transformation Subcommittee, Shared Prosperity, the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Families Work Group, and the Youth Development Subcommittee. And whereas Commissioner Cooney has served as an officer, liaison, and member of numerous boards and committees on behalf of the city of Kalamazoo, including Public Media Network, the Community Relations Board, Parks and Recreation, Prevention Works, Environmental Concerns, and Community Action Agency. Whereas Commissioner Cooney has been a steadfast voice and advocate for the most vulnerable in our community, and has worked tirelessly to keep issues of equity and justice on the public agenda, including poverty, youth, violence, police community relations, LGBTQ rights, racial equity, affordable housing, and prisoner reentry. And whereas Commissioner Cooney has been instrumental in the creation and continued support of Kalamazoo communities and schools, the Summer Youth Employment Program, the Foundation for Excellence, and Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo. And whereas Commissioner Cooney has left an indentable mark on our community as a result of his love for and dedication to the city of Kalamazoo. Now therefore, the 55th City Commission does hereby honor and recognize and thank Don Cooney for 26 years of dedicated service on the city commission and his many contributions to the community.
Any other commissioners wanting to chime in on this now? Commissioner Decker.
Yes, Commissioner Cooney, it has been an honor to serve with you over these past few years. You're a steadfast man. You have a lot of great knowledge, and we know that you cannot stay away. So I'm pretty sure that the 56 have a great opportunity to continue to have discussions with Commissioner Cooney and how you can propel the city, and not just the city, but the world forward. So I've been honored to serve with you. I also want to say I've been honored to serve with everyone on this commission and to serve my community. I'm surprised I don't have any tissue up here, but that's okay. I know that you guys will continue to lead our city to where it needs to be. We have planted many seeds here within the 54th and 55th commission, and I know that you will continue to nurture those seeds so our city can continue to grow a long while listening to our community, being within our community, and making sure that everyone is treated equally and fairly in everything that we do. Being here, it's a very difficult job. We all know that, the decisions that we have to make for us to move forward. So I just have to say, keep the momentum for the city of Kalamazoo.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure, and Kiana, Commissioner Decker, I've so enjoyed being here with you. Your commitment to the city, especially during some of, some difficult family times for you. You have continued to show up for the people of Kalamazoo. Your service has been a gift to the people of Kalamazoo. I've enjoyed getting to know you and your heart for growing what it is we're doing here in the city. I know you're leaving. I know you're not going far, we know where you live. And all the best to you and your family, as you have, you have been an amazing mother and mentor for those children by serving. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for, from my grateful heart to yours. We'll definitely be in touch. Thank you so much. And Don, I watched your service over many, many years. I supported you as you ran for Congress, and I've known you from, from our faith community that we shared years ago. I was inspired to serve in part because of your leadership, and I'm grateful for your faithful commitment as an educator and as a public servant in this education city. You are a master educator. You've made a difference in so many lives. Bless you, Don. As you move into retirement, which we all know really isn't, no. No, you have one speed, and it's, it's definitely on go, and it's a go, it's all on forward. So I wish you well, I wish you well, Don and Kiana. I love you both, and I've been, it's been my honor to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep mine short and sweet so I don't break down into tears myself. Commissioner Decker, Commissioner Cooney, it's been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve and learn alongside you. As this being my first commission, well, this current commission, my first commission, I couldn't think of a better commission to cut my teeth with, you know. Commissioner Decker, I've learned a lot from you, you know, learning how to ask those probing questions, digging deep into the work and the packets. I had the pleasure of traveling to Japan with you, getting to know you on a personal level, and understanding that what we see here is true and valid in your everyday life, and you live this commitment, and to everyone's point here, I'm sure this won't be the end. And secondly, I'm your neighbor, so I'll be popping up for coffee every now and then for some vending sessions and some advice, all of the above, so thank you for your service, and it was a pleasure. Commissioner Cooney, I've been a fan of yours for decades, so it's been surreal to serve alongside you, see you in action not only out here, but behind closed doors, you know, fighting for, fighting the good fight for those who might not have the best representation. And you make sure that in those rooms, everyone is represented, that prosperity is shared amongst us all, and I will carry that, that work forward. And yeah, just thank you, I appreciate you. And I'll, just like with Kiana, who was also with Commissioner Decker, I will be hitting you up for coffee as well. I know you retire, so I wouldn't bother you too much, but I'm gonna meet you up for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor, Dr. Cooney. I remember in 2001, I was working with Michigan Organizing Project, and you had an office, there was office space on Level where there were people gathering about the Green Party and a living wage. That was in 2001 when I first met you. You had a lot more hair then, and I could tell the work you've been putting in. Let's get it. But I really appreciated you then, and you taught me about living wages. And I've been able to take that with me and move it further and talk about thriving wages, and how we have a responsibility, not only to serve, but to be soldiers for our community, especially those who don't have a voice or people are not listening. So thank you for continuing to be a teacher, even when you didn't know you were. I love you, and it's been a pleasure to sit right beside you and do this work. Kiana? All the little sidebar conversations we've had up here, all the phone calls, all the texts, all the cocktails, sorry, I had to put it out there. I have really appreciated, and one thing I know about you, you stay true to you, and don't you ever change for nobody, even when people disagree. Stay true to you. I love you, I know where you live, I know where your mama live, and your cousin, we tight, so you will always be my family. So I love you, and thank you for service, your service.
Commissioner Pradel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Decker, I want to thank you as well, echo all my, all of our colleagues just to thank you for your service. I wrote some notes down of just how, I will always remember you as a colleague here, but your love for people. You are extrovert in the dictionary definition of being out in the community and, and just talking and being amongst people. You love to get into the weeds, and I love that. You are a lifelong learner, somebody who just craves to know as much as you possibly can to better the world. And I know you can always kind of, for you always give it straight to people, and real about how you feel or what needs to happen or be done, and you are fearless when it comes to having difficult conversations or heading things face on. I'll miss serving with you very, very much. For Dr. Cooney, some young people, they have heroes who are people like star athletes or astronauts or superstars. When you came on the city commission, I was 12 years old. I delivered the Kalamazoo Gazette to about 300 residents, and you were my hero. I remember thinking to myself, dang, like, time this right, you know, you get to come on the commission when you're heading out, but how lucky and blessed I was that you came back. I know that one of the things I remember somebody said as a quote is that, that they felt like this commission had a whole lot of heart during difficult times, but you brought the soul back. And I felt that. Something that I will carry with me for the rest of my life, and I hope we still get to do, is I have so appreciated our breakfast, regular breakfasts together, talking about sports and, you know, just what's going on in the world. When you came on, one of the first things that you identified, I remember, was we were talking about youth. And we got together and we, we worked to bring back flag football. And, you know, that was something that you identified, that you were so passionate about, and so I thought it was so fitting today that, you know, our new youth center and multipurpose room at the farmer's market is named after you. Your life is a hallmark of lifting others up, putting people first, and making sure that nobody is left behind. And for that, I'm so deeply grateful for your service and for the opportunity to serve with you, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. So I do have a note proclamation to read. Commissioner Decker, you're not being left off the proclamation list, so that's coming up, but just, Don, it's been a total honor and pleasure to serve with you. We've spent many, many years together, and it has been deeply meaningful for me. Thank you. And I just want to remind people that we had an event here just a while ago that everyone doesn't know, where we have a new multi-use building, which is over the farmer's market, which in case anybody will forget the name, and I'll tell you what, from working full-time at Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, which is a sea of hundreds of social workers, half the people there have taken a class from you in the social work department. And so I don't know how you do it, but you're always everybody's favorite professor. And I don't think it's because you give everybody As, I'm not sure. But anyway, over, over at the farmer's market, I think you might, but anyway, at the farmer's market, we now have the Don Cooney Cultivation Center, which I think is a very appropriate name because at the farmer's market, but we're talking about young people and cultivating values and aspirations in the lives of young people. So even though, yes. I, I really don't think I'm wrong in saying this is the last kind of thing you would have asked for, really. You don't look for this, but too late now, signs on the building, and everybody can get their picture taken in front of it as we go on. So thank you, Don. I do have a proclamation to read, and I'm going to pass the proclamation down to Commissioner Honoring Kiana Decker for dedication and service to the city of Kalamazoo. And I'm honored to get to read this. I have really appreciated the time that we have spent together and the perspective you continue to bring, and your willingness to be brave in times when it's sometimes hard sitting up here. Whereas Kiana Decker has served on the city commission for one term from 2021 to 2025. And whereas Commissioner Decker has served on city commission committees and subcommittees, including Internal Audit, Compliance and Ethics Committee, and the Purchasing Consent Agenda Subcommittee. And whereas Commissioner Decker has served as a member of or liaison to the Economic Development Corporation, and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Boards, the Planning Commission, the Pension Board, the Foundation for Excellence Board of Directors, and the Kalamazoo Area Transportation Study Policy Advisory Committee. And whereas Commissioner Decker has worked tirelessly to improve the lives of Kalamazoo residents by promoting business development, community engagement, and affordable housing. And whereas Commissioner Decker has urged the city to embrace internal process improvement, improved customer service, and pragmatic approaches to the provision of public services. And whereas Commissioner Decker will leave an indelible mark on our community as a result of her love for and dedication to the city of Kalamazoo. Now therefore, be it resolved that the 56 city commission does hereby honor, recognize, and thank Commissioner Kiana Decker for your dedicated service on the city commission and your many contributions to our community. Thank you. Good point. All right, so it's not only the proclamations, but it's a little bit of hardware here. These are two recognition plaques. If you want to hold one up, I don't know. For appropriate placement on the mantle. Thank you. What's that? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooney, go ahead.
It's my last shot, so I gotta do it right. So first of all, I want to thank the people of Kalamazoo. It is rare to get an opportunity to serve in a position like this, and I so deeply appreciate the people of Kalamazoo who have given me this opportunity for so many years. Second, I want to show my appreciation to my wife, Kathy. First of all, for allowing me the time to be away from my family so that I can do this thing. Secondly, for the inspiration that she gives me because of the generous, kind, compassionate person that she is. Thank you, sweetheart, for what you've done for me. I want to thank my colleagues. It's been great to serve with you guys. I mean, I've been on a lot of city commissions, but nobody beats the heart that you guys have. And I know that the And I know that the people that are coming on here will carry that same thing with us. And Jim, thank you so much. You are a man of principle, a compassionate man, and I so appreciate you. And I appreciate Aaron and Scott and the chief and all the staff who have done so well over so much time. Last night, I had the opportunity to watch the first episode of the documentary by Ken Burns on the 250th anniversary of the revolution. And I think it's so important that we look at what were the ideals on which this country was founded. They talked about democracy, the rule of the people. They talked about inalienable rights and the dignity and worth of each person. And when we look at the world today and we see the crushing authoritarianism and the terrible economic inequality and the absolute crucifixion of the dignity of people like the immigrants that are so cruelly crushed. When we think of those things, we need to get back to what this country is about. And I think about Dr. Martin Luther King in 1968. At that time, racism was prevalent all over the country, crushing. The inequality, the poverty was so rampant. And the Vietnam War was going on and just tearing the country apart. And I think about how he gave his speech on August the 3rd, 1967. And one of the things he said in that speech is, "I'm not giving up on America. I love America. I believe in America." And instead of dropping back from what the country was, facing all those evils, he said, "I'm rededicating myself to the dream of this country." And I think that's what we have to do. And what we're going to do tonight is an exercise in democracy. We're bringing up these wonderful people that the people in the community have picked to be their legislators. So, I think that's great. I think the other thing that we have to do is that we have to rededicate ourselves to that principle of inalienable rights to all the people. Because we know that the main problem that this community faces is poverty. Not enough of our people have access to what they need to lead the abundant life that they deserve. So I think we have to rededicate ourselves to that. And I got some here, I'm going to give to the city clerk some suggestions. I don't want to leave here without some suggestions about how we could do that. So, I'm walking away from this tonight. But as I walk away, I feel in my heart what Senator Ted Kennedy felt when he walked away from the Senate and he so beautifully articulated. "The work goes on, the cause endures, the hope still lives and the dream will never die." Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Our next agenda item is recognition of our city manager, Jim Ritzma. And there is a proclamation to be read by Smear Hess.
Honoring City Manager James K. Ritzma for dedication and service to the city of Kalamazoo. Whereas James K. Ritzma, Jim, has been Kalamazoo City Manager since 2013. Prior to being appointed to the City Manager of Kalamazoo, he served as Finance Director and Marshall and Battle Creek and as Battle Creek's Assistant City Manager. And whereas Jim is a credentialed manager with the International City County Management Association and a member of the Michigan Municipal Executives. He holds a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Calvin College and a Master of Public Administration from the Ohio State University School of Public Policy and Management. That was for you, Jim.
Thank you.
And whereas, as City Manager, Jim has numerous financial and organizational accomplishments, including but not limited to co-founding the Foundation for Excellence, which stabilized the city's budget while reducing the overall property mileage rate, increasing the city's bond rating, fully funding the city's other post-employment benefits obligation and creating the Kalamazoo County Consolidation Dispatch Authority while having Kalamazoo become an MEDC redevelopment-ready community. He was also victorious in creating several other organizational, community and infrastructure projects which have left the city a better place during his tenure. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor of the city of Kalamazoo, I do hereby thank, congratulate and celebrate Jim Ritzma for his years of service to the city of Kalamazoo and wish him much happiness in his new journey. God bless you, Jim.
So, it's my time to speak. Well, first of all, I want to thank the commission for that great honor and recognition. Yeah, it's been a really good career. I want to just start out tonight and acknowledge that I have served in public service for 34 years and city manager here for 12, which has been incredible journey. And it's a moment that fills me with gratitude, humility and deep reflection. I'm proud of what we, the city team, have and I have accomplished. We've rebuilt and modernized critical infrastructure, making overdue investments that have strengthened our resilience and prepared the city for future growth. We've improved community trust in our public safety department, thanks to the outstanding work of our public safety chief, David Boyson and his team. We've expanded economic opportunity and laid the foundation for many development projects, especially those that increase the housing supply in the community. And we've secured Kalamazoo's financial future, as was mentioned, by turning an OPAB liability into an overfunded asset, building reserves and creating the Foundation for Excellence that will endure for the, in perpetuity for the city of Kalamazoo. So this kind of fiscal strength isn't about balancing the books. It allows Kalamazoo to plan boldly, dream confidently and serve its residents well into the future. But beyond any project or policy, what I'll cherish the most are the city staff and who have made this organization what it is. You are the quiet strength behind every achievement. You're the one who keep the streets safe, the water clean, the parks beautiful and the city running smoothly. You have shown professionalism, care and pride through every challenge and you've made this job deeply meaningful to me. Thank you for your dedication, integrity and the heart you bring each day to this work. As I step away, I've been reflecting a lot about what I've learned from a lifetime in public service. One of those is leadership is less about authority and more about stewardship. It's about leaving things better than you found them. It's about creating a dynamic organization that will last you. And it's about creating a nurturing relationships rooted in trust and remembering that progress often comes one steady step at a time. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have walked the path here with all of you. I want to especially thank the city commission for the opportunity that you've afforded me to be Kalamazoo City Manager. I will always appreciate the support you have provided to me and our team as long as I've been here and you've all been here. So on a personal note, I want to thank my wife Sheila and family, wife Sheila's here this evening, and for their unwavering support, a lot of late nights and calls during dinner and times when duty came first. You've been the anchor and my encouragement through it all and I thank you. Looking ahead, I'm excited about what's next. More time with family, a slower pace and a chance to enjoy life's simple moments like spending time with my 15-month-old grandson Charlie. So, I think I've showed some of you pictures, a lot of. I was always carried with me the lessons, friendships and purpose this work has given me. As I close this chapter, I do so with deep gratitude and a sense of peace. The city remains in capable hands, the foundation is solid and I leave confident that Kalamazoo's best days are still ahead. Serving as your city manager has been the highest honor of my professional life. Thank you for your trust, collaboration and the opportunity to make a difference. Thank you.
We also have something for you, City Manager Ritzma, and it is the special, I'll stand up and give this to you here, make it a little more formal. Key to the city of Kalamazoo presented to Jim Ritzma in appreciation of your many years of dedication and service. Comments, commissioners? Anyone who'd like to add anything at this time? Christopher Prado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always believe that, you know, we as individuals, as people in this world are more often than not where we're supposed to for that moment based on our gifts or passions. And when you think about your background and when you came in as a person who is very much of a financial mind and whatnot as a city manager, that you were exactly the person that the city needed in that moment when you became city manager. I think back to the Blue Ribbon Panel and what was at stake, you know, for the city, you know, potentially at emergency financial manager level of response had something drastically not happened. And I think it would be easy to just throw your hands up and say, well, this is the way it is, this is what we're going to do. But we as a community moved in a different direction and decided that we can be bigger and better than that. And so I think that who you are and what you brought to that financial stability and setting the foundation is so critical to where we are today, to be able to stand at the farmer's market and have a new multipurpose building. Those kind of things and investments would never have been possible in this time if we had not taken steps like that. Just observations, just, you know, you always have passed to me as a very quiet, steady force. Remember in 2020, our last meeting before the COVID pandemic shutdown? And effectively what we did is hand over emergency powers to you as city manager. And I remember just how much uncertainty there was, thinking through what happens if public safety officers can't report for emergencies? What happened if the people who run, you know, the water and sewer plant can't manage that because of being ill? And I remember thinking to myself, at the very least, you have a very steady, capable person who's going to hold things down if things turn out to go, that they go awry. I think one of the best indicators of somebody as a leader is the people they keep around them. And you've had very little turnover during your tenure and you have an amazing team of people that do great work every single day. And I think that speaks volumes to you as well, that you entrust and that you empower a really smart, capable, brilliant group of people to do this work every day. So anyways, Jim, I want to make sure to thank you and know how much you are appreciated for your time and resilience and dedication to the city and this team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Other remarks, commissioners? Vice Mayor Hess?
What he said. And Jim, you know, when I was running and I made an appointment to see you and it was so overwhelming what it is that I was running for and how much I knew I needed to learn. And I'm grateful to you for your patience, for sitting with me, for allowing me to make some missteps, to learn from my mistakes, for, and for being there with me and for me at all hours of the day and night. And Sheila, I'm sorry for interrupting your dinners and sometimes your evenings with my questions about city management. So Jim, thank you. And you do have a heart of service. You know, you are an educator and you do have a mind for running a city and building a team. As a coach, I see in you a fellow coach who is able to take your staff and coach them to the best people that they could be. So thank you so much for being that coach for the city. Thank you so much for being a trusted manager and appointee of this commission. And, you know, thank you for having graduated from Ohio State. I am kidding. Go Blue. Okay.
Any other thoughts, commissioners, at this point? Well, I will go ahead and jump in here then. Having, I've remarked on this a couple of times and thought about this, having just gone through a process to look for a new city manager and remembering when we went through that process when you were hired, Jim. And as a matter of fact, we went through that process twice at that time. We went through the entire process, we selected individuals to interview, we interviewed those individuals, I think you remember going through that, I can't remember whether four or five at the end, and we decided to not hire anyone in that pool. And that was a very, very challenging decision, having gone through an extended process and presumably having the best potential candidates come to us. But one thing always stuck out in my mind and particularly because this was not remarked upon by just one of our candidates, but at least two or three. And this was the phrase they used at the time. "I have expertise in managing decline." I don't know if you remember this or not, but this was, a couple of our candidates mentioned that in our interview. That is really not the kind of language you want to hear out of the next city manager. However, it wasn't divorced from the day necessarily. We had, we're on the verge of communities having emergency managers here in Michigan. There was a lot of financial uncertainty and I have to say, commissioners, that with our previous city manager, we had times when there were critical things that we had no money in our budget for. For example, sidewalks. And we went through a process of encouraging people to retire early, to diminish our workforce. Those were not easy times for the city and it was not an easy time to be sitting here on these seats, really being able to provide less in the way of services rather than more. And in our second round, you rose to the top. You never used that phrase, that you were good at managing decline, I appreciate that. And sometimes as we look forward, it is easy to forget about significant events which really are trajectory altering. And even though there were some challenges about it and going through that Blue Ribbon Panel process, which you did, Commissioner Prado, I think that was prior to being on the commission. We had a hard time coming up with what the resolution was going to be. Diminished revenue from the state, state shared revenue, a challenging tax base in an older city that more than half of it is not on the property tax rolls. What are we going to do? And we really went through a list of possibilities that none of them were particularly exciting. You will remember that. And I know there were some challenges about the idea, but... And I know there were some challenges about the idea, but here we are, having gone through that process of creating a very, very unique institution at the city of Kalamazoo, not unlike the unique entity that funds scholarships for college that came out of Kalamazoo here, first one in the country. And through that process, in my estimation, went through a great, long series of safeguards. So when that money came to the city, it was unfettered by the opinions of whoever might be contributing and setting up a foundation, which is also required to follow the Open Meetings Act, just as the city does, and having the city commission, the elected representatives now and in the future, getting to make their decisions about how that money is spent. That's the difference between an idea of managing decline and the idea of being able to manage with some aspirations and, at the same time, reducing the property tax burden by 38, almost 40% on the city taxing authority for everyone who lives in the city of Kalamazoo. So I don't forget that, and I appreciate that. And you were integral and foundation, foundational in really making sure that that happened. You are a profoundly ethical person who does not seek the limelight. And as a matter of fact, your preference may not be to give public speeches. I'm guessing that's the case. And I would just like to take a moment this evening, and for all of us who have recognized the extra things that we have been able to do here at the city because of that resource, the Foundation for Excellence, which will have many components in the budget we're just about to see in a couple of weeks, I just want to say, thank you. I appreciate you, Jim. Any other thoughts, commissioners? All right. Now we have a special report from our clerk, from the Board of Canvassers, Clerk Boiling.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioners, the Kalamazoo County Board of Canvassers has certified the result of the November 4th, 2025 municipal election, and those results are as follows. Having received 4,588 votes, Jaclyn Slaby is elected city commissioner. Having received 4,914 votes, Stephanie Hoffman has been elected city commissioner. Having received 5,820 votes, Drew Duncan has been elected city commissioner and by charter designation is the vice mayor. And having received 6,473 votes, David Anderson is elected mayor. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Clerk Boiling. Now, this is the one time in my life when I get to use a Latin phrase, and this, I might have been quite sure exactly why we do this, it's tradition, though, right? So we will, we will be adjourning for the process of then calling to order the 56th city commission, and this is called sine da. So we are adjourning, sine da, and we'll walk off this dais together and walk back on as the new commission.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott Boiling. I'm the city clerk for the city of Kalamazoo. To mark their election to public office as mayor, vice mayor, and city commissioner, they will be presented, each one will be presented with a pin that's bearing the city seal, and this is to remind them of the oath that they're taking and the solemn duty that they have as they engage in, in their public service. After they are pinned by the person they've chosen, then I will administer the constitutional oath of office, and they can take their seat at the dais. The first commissioner-elect is Commissioner-elect Slaby. Presenting Commissioner-elect Slaby with their pin is former Commissioner Cooney and Maddy Jordan Woods, and Commissioner-elect Slaby is being joined by their parents, Jeff and Denise Slaby. All right. Commissioner-elect Slaby, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city commissioner according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, you may have your seat at the dais. Next is Commissioner-elect Hoffman. Commissioner-elect Hoffman, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city commissioner according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, you may have your seat at the dais. Next is Vice Mayor-elect Drew Duncan. Vice Mayor-elect Duncan will be pinned by his mother, Georgia Duncan. Vice Mayor-elect Duncan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice mayor according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, you may have your seat on the dais. And finally, David Anderson, Mayor-elect. Do you have it? She...
I have my sister in law, so you guys come up and look at me.
Okay. Mayor-elect Anderson will be pinned by Corey Terry, his wife, and joined by his sister, Mayor-elect Anderson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, you may take your seat at the dais. Commissioners, newly elected commissioners, if you've not already done so, please sign your oaths that are at your place, and I am pleased to present to you the 56th city
Hello, colleagues. Nice to see some of you again, and some of you here sitting for the first time, looking forward to it. Do we have a representative from the city manager's office who's going to be sitting up here with us? Yes, no? Okay. CRO Lamb, good to see you coming forward. Nice to see you, CRO Lamb, thanks for being here. Now, we are going to be calling this Clerk Boiling. Thank you. We're going to be calling the, calling to order the 56th city commission for the city of Kalamazoo for our second business meeting. Why, is this still extension of the first one? Okay, thank you, Clerk. For this Monday, November 17th. And I am honored to have here for our opening ceremony, my friend Pastor Michael Brown, longtime director of the, of Kalamazoo Gospel Ministries, to provide an invocation. And as Pastor Brown comes forward to the dais, I will ask everyone in the chambers to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Brown?
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, we ask your presence here today. We ask God that you would bless these commissioners and those that serve with them to care for our city. God, we ask that you grant them wisdom to make just decisions, courage to face challenges, and humility to listen and learn. May the efforts be guided by fairness, compassion, and a sincere desire to improve the lives of all residents. We also ask for our entire community, may peace, unity, and prosperity abound. Help us to work together in harmony for the betterment of the city and its people. Father, we thank you for the trust being placed in this commission today. May their meetings be conducted with respect, clarity, and purpose. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor Brown, I appreciate it. Okay. Let's get rid of the one here and go on to our seven o'clock. So I don't, yeah. We are now on to a year-end report from the Kalamazoo County... Do we have to call roll? I'm sorry, Clerk Boiling.
So we need to call the roll for the new commission?
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
And then we just basically have a public comment and commissioner comment and then...
Got it. Okay, I missed the party. All right. Then are there public comments at this time? Then are there public comments at this time? We have to call roll again for this. So, okay, thanks, Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Hess?
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Present.
Commissioner Pradel?
Present.
Commissioner Slaby?
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Duncan?
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borley. All right. Now, we are set for public comments, correct? Anyone who would like to make a public comment, please come forward, state your name, where you live in the city, and you'll have four minutes.
Hello, Kay. It's a breath of fresh air to see a new commission. I've been coming here for so, for so long, you know, bringing up the same issues. And, yeah, I feel like, you know, this commission can really turn a new, a new leaf, you know, and start a new chapter. And I'm really excited to work with y'all and, you know, give you all the benefit of the doubt because, you know, I'm still, I'm still going to come over here and talk about community concerns and lack, lack of, of action. Yeah, you know, I'm not going to lie, if I was saying that I was happy to see some of them go and, you know, see new people, but, you know, we still have the same mayor, so... Yeah. I think that really this camp, your campaign and it really brought up a conversation about housing. And I want to make sure to let you know directly, like, we're going to be watching you with everything that you're doing with housing. And we're going to be threading the needle because it's about to get cold and we need to make sure that people are not going to lose limbs and at the worst, their lives. So this is what is pressing and I'm really excited. I'm happy. I'm really happy, but there's a lot of work to do. And it's time to align with community concerns. It's time to, for the words to match, match the actions. And, you know, in any other space, in any other space, you know, you don't have to go to anybody else. You know who your position is. You know who heckles you. You know who is talking the crap and pointing out your lack of, lack of everything, lack of action. So make sure you come and talk to us instead of going around and, you know, trying to get people in trouble or trying to see who it is. It's us, and we're still going to be on you. And we're going to be on the, on, you know, here because we're dedicated to this. And, yeah, I mean, I want to keep it positive as well, so I have hope. I have hope that with the new commission, that we can really guide this, right? Really bring in the people who need to come in and make their voices heard and make sure that the community is being centered above all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Edward Nickerson. I live in the city of Kalamazoo. We have a big problem with law enforcement lying about things to judges in order to get people into mental health. Not all law enforcement officers do that. I do know that. Integrated Services of Kalamazoo sent me a letter saying that they wanted me to sign a Patient Responsibility Act. When I look at the letter that they want me to sign, the only thing I see on that letter is the part where they want me to waive all of my legal rights for the criminal acts that they committed against me. That's about all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Charday Chambers. I am a city of Kalamazoo resident. First, I want to congratulate our new commissioners and our returning commissioners. I can't wait to see your guys' work. And with that being said, you guys, we'll have something being presented to you on your agenda from the Planning Commission to protect natural features specifically on Stadium Drive. And I hope that you guys continue to stand behind the Planning Commissioners of the city and protect the natural features and keep those items safe. And once again, thank you guys for serving and congratulations to our new commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to take advantage of this public comment period? See no one. Next item on our agenda is Commissioner comments. So just a reminder here, because I'm obviously losing track of things a little bit, is that immediately following adjournment of this meeting, there's going to be a reception in the atrium. And then we're going to be reconvening, and I can't see the clock from here, but expected at seven o'clock is when we're to reconvene, which will be eight o'clock on that clock. But we'll be back here to convene our business meeting, which does have items on the agenda. There's also public comment opportunities at that meeting. Commissioners, comments for this meeting. We have another opportunity for public comments at our next meeting as well, so... Yes, Vice Mayor Duncan?
I want to take the opportunity, for those of you who will not be here later, for the, what is it, the main meeting? I'm still learning, y'all. For, for the business meeting, I want to sincerely thank the people of Kalamazoo. From the bottom of my heart and my family's heart, this has been the greatest honor of my lifetime thus far. And the trust, the love, the patience, and the knowledge that this community has poured into me during this campaign is something that I can never, ever repay. But it starts with doing this work here today. Thank you for the people on my campaign. Rena, Wendy, Sue, Chase, of course, my love, Roland, people who made calls, walked in the rain, knocked doors, so that we could spread this message to all twenty-six precincts. This city, as I have explained along the campaign trail, can be the city that it says it is on paper. And for those in the city who have not been acting in good faith, the jig is up. So I'm happy to be serving you. You have bestowed an honor on me beyond what I can put into words, and I hope that I can show you that appreciation with the work that comes from this dais.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Duncan. Any other comments from commissioners? All right. So once again, we are gathering in the atrium down here. This meeting will be adjourned, and there will be reconvening as this commission at seven o'clock. Thank you once again to everyone who showed up, who's participated all through this process. We are adjourned.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Yep, all you have to do is sign.